I'd like to call order the Westgiving Planning Commission meeting for Tuesday, October 10, 2017 at 7:03 PM. Any person wishing to address the Planning Commission on any of the items, there's some cards up here on the podium. If you wish to speak in oral communications on things that are not on the agenda, those will go on the oral communications. And if you want to speak on something on the agenda, those will be addressed when we get to that item on the agenda. So I please all ask you to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for a moment of silent prayer meditation for all the victims of the hurricane floods, fires, and recently the shootings. Please stand.
Please place your hand over your heart. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have roll call, please.
Yes, Commissioner Hing. Commissioner Minas.
Present.
Commissioner Redhols. Commissioner Castellanos.
Here.
Chairman Holtz.
Here. Do we have any changes or additions to the regular meeting of September 26, 2017? Any additions, corrections? If not, they stand approved as is. Brings us to oral communications. This is time that any member of the public may speak to the Commission on any matter within the scope of duties assigned to the Commission relating to non-agendized or consent calendar items. Other matters included on this agenda may be addressed when that item is under consideration. Do we have anyone that wants to speak on oral communications at this time? If not, I will close oral communications and take us to public hearings. First item is number two, variance number 17-07 categorical exemption. Applicant is Penske Audi of West Covina. Location 2016 East Carvey Avenue South. Request for approval of a variance to install a freestanding sound wall that would deviate from certain developmental standards, including wall height. The proposed wall is 10 feet in height and would be located along the easterly property line of the subject property on East Carvey Avenue South adjacent to the residential areas. May we have a staff report, please? And who will be giving it?
Yes, our planning intern Renee Aguilar will be presenting that report.
Thank you.
Good evening, Chairman and fellow Commissioners. Tonight I will be presenting variance number 17-07. The applicant is requesting approval of a variance to install a freestanding sound wall that would deviate from the six-foot height limit. The subject property is located at 2016 East Carvey Avenue South, which is the property located to the east of the Auto Plaza. December Nordino Freeway is located to the north. Penske Mercedes-Benz dealers located to the west, and single-family houses are adjacent to the east and south. In 2010, the State California Department of Transportation, Caltrans, informed the city of its plans to proceed with a high occupancy vehicle lane of the San Bernardino Freeway between Puente Avenue and Citrus Avenue. As part of the required mitigation measures, Caltrans was required to construct a 14-foot-high masonry block walls, sound wall, along the state's right-of-way on the north side of East Carvey Avenue, which is directly across from the Penske Auto Dealership. The sound wall would extend across the majority of the width of the Audi property. The construction of this sound wall would reduce the visibility of the Penske Auto Dealership. Therefore, the owners of Penske Audi indicated that they were concerned that the construction of the sound wall would be detrimental and may result in the closure of the dealership. At the request of Penske Audi, the city asked Caltrans to explore other options that might avoid the construction of the sound wall that would directly block the freeway frontage of Penske Audi. Over the course of several months, Caltrans and Penske worked out a solution where Caltrans would eliminate portions of the sound wall directly in front of the Penske Audi. And if you look at the PowerPoint, you can see the south, the bottom yellow line is where the, excuse me, where the yellow line is, that's where the wall begins, and there will be the sound wall at 10 feet running vertical. That's, if you look at the red dot, that's where Penske Auto Dealer is. The agreed solution requires raising the height of the remaining sound wall from 14 to 16 feet along the freeway to the east of the Audi. And the construction of a 10-foot-high block wall by Penske Audi, the maximum height for a block wall on the boundary of a non-residential zone that abuts a residential zone is 6 feet. For this reason, construction of a 10-foot-high masonry wall requires a variance. The proposal is to install a 10-foot wall along the northeastern corner of the subject property. The proposed wall is approximately 110 feet in length, beginning at the front property line extending to the building wall. The proposed sound wall would be adjacent to three neighboring single-family properties. During the review of the proposal, staff recommended that the applicant contact the neighboring property owners to inform them of the proposal. The applicant sent a letter on July 27, 2017, to the three neighboring single-family houses. The applicant indicated that they did not receive a response from those letters. Existing six-foot wall will remain, and a new four-foot wall will be constructed on top. The proposed wall would be comprised of split face block and would be painted white to match the existing building colors. The existing wall and fences on the single-family properties would remain. A condition of approval has been included requiring a landscape plan to be submitted for the area in proximity to the proposal wall prior to the issuance of permits. Pursuant to the California Environmental Quality Act, CEQA, the proposed project is considered to be categorically exempt since the project consists of a perimeter wall for an existing auto dealership. The proposed sound wall has been reviewed by Caltrans and is consistent with a 2012 environmental impact report. Caltrans provided a NIPA/CEQA revalidation form to clarify that the EIR remains valid in light of the proposed project. A noise analysis was conducted and determined that the proposed 10-foot sound wall would have no noise impacts, and Caltrans was notified regarding tonight's public hearing. The approval of a variance requires that the Planning Commission makes required findings. The required findings are included in the staff report on page four and five, as well as in the resolution. In conclusion, due to the loss of freeway visibility, the wall that would be constructed to prevent any potential negative consequences on the auto dealership while mitigating potential sound impacts on the residential neighborhood to the east as required to be mitigated by Caltrans. Staff is recommending approval of the proposed variance. This concludes the presentation. I would be happy to answer any questions. The applicant is present for any further questions as well. Thank you.
Question to staff. I think I just saw in the last one, he said there's an existing six-foot, and they're going to add an additioning four-foot, which would make 10-foot. But I thought the total height was supposed to be eight-foot.
No, it's a 10-foot. They're proposing a 10-foot.
It's 10-foot?
Yeah.
What is the eight-foot that you mentioned, Ron? Okay, I got it. Okay, I got it. All right. Any other questions, staff? None? Okay. Thank you, staff. I'll open up the public testimony. Does the applicant here want to speak? Please come forward. And please fill out a card before you leave. Appreciate it.
We'll get you one.
You can fill it out later.
The pink one, yeah. Please sure. My name is Amat Tijudin. I represent EBTA Architects, and we're here on behalf of the Penske of Southern California Mercedes. And I just really want to thank the staff for aiding us along this process. You did a fine job, and I really don't have much more to add than the gentleman spoke of. But we've gone through this for quite a bit, and interfacing with Caltrans was the challenge. But these are the findings that they recommended to us, and so we just did it accordingly. So if you have any questions, okay.
Any questions of the applicant? None? None?
Yes.
Commissioner Hing.
So we're looking at, basically, Caltrans want to build the block walls along the freeway area, and because you want to drop the wall, you're building it around the property line instead.
Just at those three properties.
Is that by the request of Caltrans?
It's negotiated between Caltrans and Penske.
I see. Okay. Thank you. That's all.
Anyone else? Commissioner Manis?
So I noticed that the treatment, though, is galvanized metal. It's not a CMU block wall.
Oh, no, it's a galvanized stud wall, and we have an EPHUS finish, which is more plaster. So we just blend the wall.
Will it provide a certain noise retention?
Oh, yes. We've gone through the sound rating with Caltrans. That was one of the most important aspects with Caltrans.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Anyone want to speak against the project? If not, I'll close it to public testimony and open up the Commission discussion. Anybody else want to go first? Commissioner Castellanos.
All right, well, I've been to the Audi dealership, and I remember when Caltrans got started on this project, I was aware of this request and the collaboration with Caltrans. I think they understood the need to find an alternate solution to blocking the entire visibility, so that's really where this came from. And I think that this proposal will continue to allow Audi to succeed, and I see it as necessary. And I believe this request meets all the findings, so I will be voting in favor of it.
Thank you. Anyone else? Commissioner Manis?
Obviously, I was not involved with the earlier discussions, but I get it. It's a certain, to a certain degree, mitigating the impact of not providing the block wall. The only thing I do want to stress, because it's not necessarily the same material that's being used with the existing CMU block wall, is to ensure that the galvanized, the metal part will be treated to very closely match the existing wall that's out there. And I think it's going to be achieved via some sort of stucco element, but that's really it on my part. Thank you.
Commissioner Hing? Nothing? Okay. I agree with my fellow Commissioners, and I know this has long been in the works, and I think it'll be fine, so I'm in favor of the project. We have resolution numbers, please.
Yes, there's just a variance resolution on this, so that will be 17-5918.
Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the variance.
Have a second?
Second.
Second by Manis. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Passes 4-0. This action is final unless appealed to the City Council within 10 days. Thank you, sir. Takes us to item number three. Administrative use permit number 17-11. Administrative use permit number 17-27 categorical exemption. Applicant is Nancy Tong. Location is 1212 Inspiration Point. The request is for an administrative use permit to construct a 751-square-foot balcony above a proposed 374-square-foot great room to the rear of an existing single-family residence. The proposed balcony and great room will be architecturally consistent with the existing residence. The applicant is also requesting approval of an administrative use permit to construct an eight-foot-high retaining wall to the rear and sides of the property. A three-foot-six-inch tempered glass rating will also be installed at grade. May we have a staff report, and who will give it, please?
Yes, our senior planner, Ron Garcia, will be presenting that report.
Thank you.
Chairman, members of the Commission, as stated, the applicant is requesting to construct a new second-story balcony and to enclose an existing California room to the rear of an existing single-family residence. With the proposed additions and modifications, the house will have a total floor area of 5,228 square feet, including a 629-square-foot garage. Again, the applicant is requesting, is also requesting to construct an eight-foot maximum high retaining wall to the rear and sides of the property. The existing single-story home is 5,228 square feet and is located in a two-story neighborhood on Inspiration Point, south of Hillside Drive. Many of the surrounding homes were built as part of the Taylor Morrison development, approved by the Planning Commission in 2015. Again, the applicant is requesting to enclose an existing 374-square-foot California room to create a great room to the rear of the existing single-family residence. The applicant is also requesting to construct a 751-square-foot balcony to the rear of the house. With the proposed additions and modifications, will have a total floor area of, again, 5,228 square feet. The 751-square-foot balcony is not included in the floor area calculation. The code allows balconies under 200 square feet to be constructed, taking access from the existing second story of a home. Balconies over 200 square feet require the approval of the administrative use permit. The house does not have any neighbors immediately adjacent to the rear north of the property. The house is located above an area of topography and separated from northerly neighbors by Hillside Drive. The balcony would be located approximately 111 feet away from the rear property line. The house does not have any neighbors immediately adjacent to the rear north of the property. Just to provide you a summary of the site plan here. So essentially, this is Inspiration Point, which is the front. And again, this is the hillside where the proposed retaining wall is being proposed here. And directly north of that is Hillside Drive, which is along the rear here. And the balcony, again, this will be proposed along the rear of the house. This elevation is showing the proposed east elevation of the proposed balcony. And again, you can see the enclosed great room, which is here, on the first, and then the balcony on the second. This slide shows you the west elevation. This slide here shows you the balcony to the south. The applicant, again, is requesting the approval of an eight-foot-high retaining wall to the rear and sides of the property. The code requires the approval of an administrative use permit for the retaining wall between four and eight feet in height. Due to the shape of the lot, the proposed retaining wall would be between 25 to 50 feet away from the rear property line. Construction of the wall would include 428 cubic yards of fill. 42-inch tempered glass railing would also be installed at grade along the proposed retaining wall. And again, you can see from grade at maximum height, the retaining wall is eight feet here, and then the decorative railing above that here. And you could see the fill on this portion. Staff recommended that the applicant share their project proposal with their neighbors. An open discussion between the applicant and the applicant's neighbors is significant in order to address initial concerns. The applicant included a list of signatures that has been provided for second-story application requests. That attachment was provided in your staff report. The applicant used the form to notify the closest properties of their intention to construct the balcony at the rear of the home. Signature acknowledges that they have received notice of the proposed plans. The applicant was able to obtain signatures from the neighboring house to the east, as well as two of the neighbors across Inspiration Point facing the subject property. The property located to the west of the subject property is currently vacant. Staff received a request for a public hearing on July 21, 2017, from Mr. Edmund Tong and Ms. Esther Ing, residents of 2945 East Hillside Drive. Mr. Tong, Mrs. Ing expressed concerns over the noise and disturbance caused by the proposed construction, potential privacy impacts, the size and scale of the house, of the proposed balcony, and potential for landslides along the slope. At the time, staff received the request for a public hearing. The applicant had two administrative use permit requests filed with the city. One of the proposed, one for the proposed balcony and the other for the proposed retaining wall. After discussion with staff, the applicant decided to postpone the public hearing based on the possibility a hearing would be requested for the retaining wall as well. Mr. Tong and Mrs. Ing also submitted a public hearing request for the proposed retaining wall on August 25, 2017, which is attached in the staff report, suggesting greenery be installed along the slope, and expressing concerns over potential for landslides, earthquakes, privacy impacts, noise, and disturbance from construction, and the size and scale of the development. Mr. Tong and Mrs. Ing visited the planning department on September 9, 2017, to review the plans, and did not present any alternatives to the proposed design that they would accept. 2945 East Hillside Drive is located to the rear of the subject property. The properties are separated by, again, as previously indicated, by 111 feet of topography, as well as Hillside Drive. And the proposed balcony would overlook the front yard of 2945 Hillside Drive. Additionally, although the subject property is located in an area of topography and is approximately 90 feet higher than 2945 East Hillside Drive, the proposed balcony would be located approximately 111 to the rear, and the proposed retaining wall would be located between 25 and 50 feet away from the rear property line. The proposal of the second-story addition requires subcommittee design review. The proposal was reviewed by the subcommittee on July 11, 2017, and direction was provided to proceed with the public notice mailing. Your staff report includes a discussion on the subcommittee for design review guidelines. The project is categorically exempt under CEQA, Section 15303, since the project consists of one single-family residence in a residential zone. The required findings have been made and are included in your staff report. Staff recommends that the Planning Commission adopt a resolution approving the administrative use permits 1711 and 1727. That concludes staff's presentation. Be happy to answer any questions. The applicant is also present for any questions as well.
Thank you for the report. Any questions, staff? None? Commissioner Hing? No? Mr. Castellanos?
No.
I have none either. Thank you for that report. We'll open it up to public testimony. Do the applicant want to come up? Thank you. Please fill out a card before you leave. I'd appreciate it.
Thank you, Chairman. Thank you, staff member. Thank you especially Ron and Monica for helping, great deal work on these applications. Sorry. My name's Linda. I'm a representative Nancy, who is my best friend. And after we received a neighbor's request for public hearing, we did have, spent some time with my designers. We tried to compromise the retaining wall, APH retaining wall, to 32 inches garden wall. And we like to plant five California pepper trees around the Hill Rice Street, which is on the city property on the driveway, on the other side, down below the slope. And but we tried to keep the balcony as we suppose to propose the, and enclose the downstairs patio area.
Any questions of the applicant? Commissioner Manis?
So after you heard, after you received notice of a concern with the project, did I hear you correctly? So the height of the retaining wall came down from 10 to 8?
No. The retaining wall was supposed to build is eight feet tall, but we tried to build some greens as well, but we down to 32 inches garden wall, which is below three feet.
Okay. And the pepper trees, again, can you?
California pepper trees, five of them.
Five of them along, maybe Ron, if you can just maybe put the cross-section up?
No, the tree will be, the tree will be planted down, little down, down to the, below the, below the property line, down to the slope, on the street.
So in the valley, or a little?
No, it will be much down, lower. Yes, yes. Right now, they have some trees on the street, but only that corner is kind of, only this corner doesn't have trees. So we tried to plant five California pepper tree. Those are fast-growth trees and will grow bigger. I definitely will block the view of the neighbor concern.
So the pepper trees?
Yes. I'm sorry. Go ahead, go ahead.
So the pepper trees are going to be located more towards Hillside Drive, not closer to the retaining wall?
No. Close to the side, to the street, to the next to the, just along the street, yeah.
Okay.
There's some trees, there's some trees all the way, but they stop right there, right there, right there, right in front of our properties. But there's some trees there. But we tried to plant those five trees, will be fulfill the tree box. So definitely will.
Okay, thank you.
You'll help on there. Yeah. You're welcome. Thank you. Any questions?
Yeah, so where you're proposing the trees to be planted, is that your property or city property?
I think city property, right? It's.
It looks like it to me. Have you checked if that's acceptable?
Usually, those trees are planned by builder, but for some reasons, I didn't see any builders. I didn't see any plans. When I talked to the builder, didn't plan to build any trees on that corner.
You mean, they didn't continue what they had started, what you're describing?
Yeah, for some reason, I don't know. But I checked with the builder, they don't have any plans to build those trees. It stops right there, but we're thinking about to at least build five trees that will cover the corner.
So what you're saying is that those were original plans by the builder to continue the trees?
I'm not sure if they have, I'm sorry, I'm not sure if they have plans of these or not, but after I talked to them, they, I don't think they have, they have plan to continue to build those trees.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Anything else?
That's all.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Does anyone else want to speak in favor of the project? Anyone else want to speak against the project? Please come up.
Perhaps before we hear, I could clarify a little bit so we don't have, that's a city-owned landscape maintenance district, which the original property owner landscaped probably decades ago. I don't exactly know when that one was landscaped. It wasn't the responsibility of the builders who built these houses. It wasn't the responsibility of the builders who built these houses, because it was already, generally, those were already completed and dedicated to the city. So a private person doesn't have the ability just to go plant a tree in those areas. They would have to, we'd have to work through that if that was even something that the city would consider, because you need water, it needs to drain correctly for it to grow, needs to have the right shade, sun ratio for certain trees. So I, I just want to put that, just to clarify that situation. Generally, when people propose trees, they propose them on their property, not on other properties nearby.
Thank you, Jeff. So would that hold up the project until that's approved or what?
Well, I think maybe we should hear from the, go through the public hearing, and then we can talk about possibilities. There might be some other ways to handle that.
Okay, all right. Would you like to come up, sir? Please state your name and please fill out a card before you go. Oh, you do? Edmund Tong?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Hi, gentlemen, council. I'm the owner of twenty-nine forty-five. We've been living there since twenty-oh-three. So the, the, I think what we're against the new project, because we already, my wife already write a letter to the, to your, to your council already on July twenty-first. The main problem is a little concerning of my privacy. My, my second, second, my home there is if he build a balcony, he can just sit down there, watch my shower, and that's why against that, that balcony. If he can build a, the, the retainer wall, I don't think is a problem, but the big problem is that, the, the balcony, why, why need that big, big of the balcony and to, the balcony would be lost my, my privacy. That's my, that's my objection. Yeah. And I, I saw the project there, it says a hundred and ten foot from the property to my house, but when I saw I live there, I don't think it's that, that long. I already, when I walk to, I walk out my house, already can see the retainer wall there. So I mean, that's my, that's my, that's my, that's my reason to against the, the project.
So your main concern is a privacy issue?
Yeah.
Sir, so you said, as far as an example, you gave like your showers, do, do your showers' windows face towards the street?
My three, three bathroom window is against the back.
In the back?
Yeah, in the front of the, in the front of the project.
I'm trying to visualize it, because as I, as I see the map and the way the houses are positioned, I believe the, the front of your house faces the back of this proposal or, or the balcony. So their balcony would see out into your, the front of your house.
Yeah, but my, but my property on the, my property, all the bedroom, all the bathroom is in the front.
Okay, that's, that's what I was asking of you. So your bathrooms are in the front?
Yeah.
And now, are they, what are the size of those front windows? Are they big windows?
They're pretty big in window.
So if your concern is for privacy from them seeing in, what about just cars driving by and accessing the same line of sight?
We, we live on second floor, I don't think that, I don't think that car can see the, the window. But if you, they are, they are on the second floor of the balcony, they can, they can easily see there.
See down?
Yeah, because they see down and then you look up, it's different.
How, how big are the bathroom windows approximately?
My master bedroom, I have no idea. I think it's probably three hundred, and I have a two other bedroom, couple hundred.
Couple hundred what?
I mean, the, the bathroom.
No, I mean, the, how big are the window sizes?
The window size, I believe is my one have four, two, four by eight, no, three by, three by six probably, one, two, three, four, probably four windows.
And what kind of glasses in there?
Just normal glass.
Clear glass?
Clear glass, yes.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else have question? Commissioner Manis?
So, Mr. Tong, just to understand. Are you opposed to any balcony as part of this proposal, or do you believe that there's an opportunity for them to at least have some portion of a balcony?
At least have some portion, and at least the second floor of the, the, the balcony is not, not necessary.
Do, do you think then your opinion would be, if there was something smaller, it would mitigate the concerns that you're voicing at this moment?
I don't know. I'm doing this business, so.
Okay, I'm just trying to understand. That's my only question. Thank you.
Thank you.
One question. Since their elevation is ninety feet, I believe ninety feet or a hundred feet above you, would they be overlooking your rooftop or through the window? I'm trying to, because we don't get a chance to go to their backyard and see what it looks like.
If, I'm sorry, your, again, your question?
I guess if you were to go on Inspiration Street, most of the houses are pretty high up above the neighbors down there, and I guess the question is, if you're up there on those hillside house, and they're about ninety or a hundred feet above you, so I guess when they're up there looking from their backyard, would they be looking on top of your rooftop or below that to see through the windows? Because I guess the reason I'm asking that was, I was there when they were building those house, and I don't remember seeing through people's windows. Again, we cannot go into people's backyard for this particular project, but at the time, I remember standing over there, we see people's rooftop. That's what I remember a few months back. So I don't know if this particular project will be standing up there looking into the house or predominantly the rooftop when you're up there.
If, if the bill is the house existing somewhere like that, they probably to be looking in my, probably in my second floor, but if you already build, if you build a balcony tall, he can definitely see my second floor and garage door and the entrance door too. Does that answer your question?
Yes, it does.
Yeah.
Can you clarify, can staff clarify the, the elevation between the two houses and, and verify that it was measured at a hundred and eleven foot separation between the two residences?
Get a Google street view of this, of the gentleman's house, so you can see what? Respond to that just by what you have, the aerial you have in front of you. So if you look at the aerial that you have, and it's a little, it's, it's, it's somewhat misleading and unclear, because we don't have the house on there, but the house was built on the pad, and this line over here to the side is eighty-two feet. So if I schedule eighty-two feet from the end of the pad area that's, that's graded on here, I don't get to the rear property. I mean, I get to about to the rear property line. So if I'm, if I'm estimating, that's about eighty feet from the edge of the pad to the rear property line, and then there's another sixty to eighty feet to get to the street, and then the street has sixty foot wide. So my, my gut feeling is it's a hundred and fifty to two hundred feet from the back of the subject house to the front of the house that we're talking about.
So it's even more than a hundred and eleven?
I think so, yeah.
And I noticed in the picture?
I think a hundred and eleven was quoted, I think, was the width of their rear yard, from the back of the house to the back property line.
I get it. It, it looks like there's quite a large tree too in front of the gentleman's house that would block, uh, the, or would enable more privacy from the one house to the other. It's not like it's a strict clear view to the house.
So you can see here, this is the corner of Inspiration Point. Right now, there's two houses that are built here. The applicant's home is about here. This would be the? So I'll just go back to the, the aerial again. So you can see that. So let me just go back to the aerial, I mean, to the Google street view. Essentially, it's this house here.
The applicant's house, okay.
Correct.
So what's the approximate?
Oh, yeah.
What's the approximate height?
And this is the appellant's house here.
Have we established the height, differential height between the two lots? Excuse me. Approximately, I heard ninety feet.
The height of, I'm sorry, can you repeat that again?
Between the two residences.
So between the two residences, I'll go back to the, the, so as you can see here as a staff report, as we indicated in the staff report, so the balcony, the, the rear of the home is about here. So the measurement based on the plan that you have, so from the edge of that balcony back to the property line, which is here, this blue line, is a hundred and eleven feet.
Okay.
So in addition to that, so from the rear property line there, there's a hundred and thirty, an additional hundred and thirty foot separation to the front property line of the appellant's, to twenty-nine thirty-four Hillside. So that's already two hundred plus feet.
That's a part, but I'm just saying, the difference in height of the two.
So you're, we're talking vertical versus horizontal?
I'm talking about vertical.
And, and the vertical is, it's really hard for us to tell without, I'm looking.
But, but there is a difference in height.
There is a difference, and I, from what I'm looking at on a, it's not even shown on there, and part of the problem is the development wasn't, we don't have the aerial, but I think ninety to a hundred at least, the difference in elevation.
And Jeff, or Ron, to just confirm, the pad of the proposed balcony sits higher than the pads of the properties along the hillside, correct?
Oh, yes.
Yes, yes.
Yeah, probably ninety to a hundred feet.
Okay, and this is a two-story home, Mr. Tong's home?
Both, both houses are two-story.
Which probably sits, let's assume, worst case, at, at the ridge of that home, maybe thirty-two feet?
More, probably closer to twenty-five, but yeah.
Worst case, I said.
Yeah, worst case, yeah.
All right.
Any other question of the, of Mr. Tong? None? Thank you. Please fill out a card before you go.
Oh, he already filled one out.
Oh, I got one, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Does anyone else want to speak in, against the project? Would you like to come up and rebut what he's saying? You don't have to.
Thank you, thank you, Hon, thank you, Commissioner. Thank you, all staff member. Because we brought issue of planting trees, which is on the county, maybe city, city's land, I was thinking about maybe if we, if it's possible, we can build some trees, maybe along my property line, you know, within the property line. It would be possible after I talk to the, the designer. Yes, trees, maybe. Yeah. Okay, and? And then all my neighbors has balconies on Inspiration Point, which is we overlooking the, as, as far as Ms. Han concerned, was overlooking the rooftop and not the window. I don't think by eyes, even though I have twenty, twenty, you know, I'm not twenty, twenty vision, won't be able to view somebody, you know, the windows, but we tried to build a balcony to fitting the floors of the, of the street. So that's, and especially, this is spectacular views that city, city of West Combiner concerned, so we thinking about, that's the reason why I think we have to build a balcony. Thank you.
I do have one question. So as, as the chairman was just asking, you know, on your property, you do have the ability to make that decision on your own about planting trees?
Okay.
You know, adjacent to, to the retaining wall on your property?
Okay.
Is that something that you would be comfortable making a decision on right now, or is that something you have to think about?
Oh, I can, I feel comfortable if this council says issues, I feel comfortable.
So you would be willing to plant those? Did you have plans for that little, you know, area?
We have, yes, I have plans, we have some plans. I can send it to you if you can see that.
No, 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 I mean, from the retaining wall to the edge of your property, did, that's kind of like the, that space there?
Because the, because the, the slope issues, the, the property line, we had, we had?
No, I know, I know the slope, but what I'm asking is, did you already have an idea for what you were going to do with that little rectangle of land?
I had, we had idea of planting some trees like this on the?
We could pass it. Ron, can you put, bring, go back to the, where it shows the retaining wall, please?
Yes, the California peppers that we got. I can maybe email to Ron, so you can see.
Right there. Okay, so the, the dotted line, is that the edge of the property?
This is the, yeah.
Okay, so, so this is what I'm talking about, ma'am, with, where the, where the red light is? Do you have plans for any, anything right there?
Oh, not yet, not yet. I have the plan.
Like, any ideas? I'm, I'm just trying to understand, like, did you have plans for a garden? Was that just going to be left untouched?
Yes, of course, for gardens, we have lot of, yeah, we botanical gardens, yes, we have flowers.
So that's where I'm going with this?
Yes, we do, of course. We building, we intend to build thirty, thirty-two inches garden wall, along with all those, of course, botanical gardens, flowers, and?
And, and my?
Let me interrupt just one second.
Go ahead.
That, that flat portion at the back, or the, the sloping up, is a, is a concrete swale?
Yeah.
To catch water.
Yeah.
So you can't, you can't plant trees there.
Yeah, or a little bit down there.
There's, uphill, there's some, no, the swell goes all the way along the, the slope, because it's taking water out. I think there's some other options, perhaps you get input from?
Either down there?
Give her rebuttal, and then close the hearing, and we can talk about options.
Commissioner Dario, just to add to what Jeff had indicated, as part of the administrative use permit app review, one of the conditions of approval is that they have to submit a landscape plan showing, installing landscaping in this area to soften and buffer the, the, the retaining wall. So essentially, you're not seeing a straight-up-and-down retaining wall, so we would require some ground cover, shrubs, and, and also trees, so that's, is part of the, the, the review of the administrative use permit.
Yes, yes. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other questions of staff or of the applicant this time? Everybody clear? Okay. Close it to public testimony at this time, and we'll open it up to commission discussion. Who would like to go first?
I'd like to go first, if you allow, allow me to.
You'd like to go first?
I'm not a commissioner, but I, I think there's some things to, kind of? I'm not a commissioner, but I, I think there's some things to kind of point out as, as we have this discussion. The proposal is before you tonight is an eight-foot retaining wall, and the applicant has volunteered to reduce that to thirty-two inches. And I think you may be aware that the code requires an administrative use permit for retaining walls between four feet and eight feet. So if you go to thirty-two inches, which is under three feet, they don't need, that is allowed by right, they don't need the planning commission's approval to build a thirty-two inch wall. So, and secondarily to that, if they don't need your approval, then you can't condition that. That's called a ministerial action, that's, that, the city has to approve that without conditions if they meet the standards. And, and what they volunteer, we don't have a plan yet, but what they volunteer, they meet the standards. So then, if that's the case, if you're comfortable with that, and they're comfortable, basically they're withdrawing their AUP, and then it's just focus on the balcony. So then you're focused on the balcony and ways to mitigate the balcony that you would condition. So that, that gets back to the landscaping issue, is there a reason to provide trees to mitigate the balcony? And, or shrubs, or some other, or something else, and if you believe so, then we can have that discussion more. But I wanted to sort of lay out the framework, because we're not really, because of their volunteering to withdraw the AUP for the retaining wall, we're not really talking about the retaining wall anymore. We're just talking about the balcony.
I guess, are they removing the complete eight-foot wall? Retaining wall?
That's what she volunteered, that's what she stated when she came up, they're, they're proposing to go from an eight-foot to a thirty-two inch, which is basically a two-and-a-half foot wall.
Which is automatic. Mr. Castellanos?
You know, I, I have no problem with the retaining wall. I think that part's fine, and in fact, I, I don't even have a problem with, with the balcony, I was just looking for, especially as part of the CUP for the landscape plan. I was just trying to see if there's an opportunity to mitigate the neighbor's concerns, although I, with the street view that I found, I really don't see a privacy impact from where I'm sitting. In fact, as the applicant mentioned, I think that with a north-facing backyard, I mean, that's, those are beautiful views of LA. In fact, with the, the distances, or the estimates of distances we've mentioned, I mean, that's, as we said, at least a hundred feet directly from, from the bottom, a hundred, about a hundred feet up. And, well, Pythagorean theorem, that, that hypotenuse is a lot more than a hundred feet. And also, as applicant mentioned, I mean, you would really kind of need, I don't know, binoculars or super eyes to really even get weird or creepy in that fashion, and I really don't see that happening. So I'm actually okay with the retaining wall, I'm okay with the balcony, I was just trying to find ways to mitigate concerns, but I, I'm okay with it, so that's where I'm coming from.
Mr. Jimenez?
I think I'm on the same boat as well. If anything, I may suggest is through the use of the landscaping condition is to maybe study the possibility of, I don't want to use the word mature landscape, but maybe certain trees of a certain box size that may lend, again, to, to provide further screening. I, I agree, I agree with Commissioner Castellanos, in that due to the angle, the finished pads of the respective homes, I, I think it would be a tough view from that balcony into any of the windows of the residents on Hillside Drive. So with that said, I'm, I too am in support, but again, maybe suggesting that the landscape plan includes some, some level of study of a mature landscape. Thank you.
Mr. Hing?
It's really tough, but I, I guess I'm okay with my fellow commissioners, in the sense that regarding the balcony issues, and also regarding the retaining wall, I'm okay with it. However, if you see a big block of retaining wall with eight-foot high, that wouldn't look as pleasant if you're looking up. If you were to landscape the retaining wall, I guess some type of climbing vine or trees that's tall enough to kind of hide it in that little valley between the drainage, that might make it look, kind of seem part of the hillside. So other than that, I'm, I'm okay with it.
I agree with my fellow commissioners, I, I thank the applicant for reducing the height of the wall, that makes it a lot easier for all of us. And, and the, the vertical height between the two properties, and, and the distance between the two properties, I don't think it's gonna cause a problem. And in addition to that, in front of the, the person's house at twenty-nine forty-five Hillside, they got quite a large tree in front of their house that also would block some of the view between the two houses. So I am definitely in favor of the project at this time. The only thing I would ask the applicant to maybe appease Mr. Tong a little bit, is to make sure that once the construction starts, that they try to expedite it as fast as possible, so it eliminates the noise and the dust and all that, so, you know, some of these projects, they start it, and it goes on and on and on, so if you could maybe put a clause in your contract that they need to complete it in a very timely fashion, it would be great. So with that, I will ask for a resolution number, I think we only need one now at this time.
While you're doing that, I'll correct myself when I was speaking, I said CUP, I meant AUP.
Okay. So do I have a motion to approve seventeen-five-nine, or seventeen-dash-five-nine-one-nine? I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
I have a first and a second, we have roll call, please.
May I ask a question, because there was a discussion on the landscape? Do you want to make that, do you want to modify the condition? Or add a condition and, and put a specimen size, twenty-four inch box, thirty-six inch box? Or do you want, Ron, remind, is there a landscape plan that's required as part of this, for the balcony? Yeah, I don't think the balcony itself would require a landscape plan, at least not what's before you, I think...
You know, it's, it seems to me the applicant is very open to meeting all of the things that we've asked him for, and they want to put vegetation and landscaping, and I don't know that we need to make a, a drive to stake, so you will...
We can talk to them, we, we can communicate with them.
That's what I mean, I think they're willing to, they've gone overboard trying to appease us to begin with, so if they're willing to work with the staff on that, I don't think we need to make it up.
Okay.
That's my opinion.
I agree. All right, so there's a motion and a second, and so roll call. Commissioner Hing? Commissioner Jimenez?
Yes.
Commissioner Castellanos?
Yes.
Chairman Holtz?
Aye, passes four-zero. This action is final, let's appeal to the city council within ten days. Thank you very much, good luck with your project. This takes us to item number four, general plan amendment number seventeen dash oh-one, zone change number seventeen dash oh-one, categorical exemption, applicant City of West Covina. Location, assessors, assessors parcel numbers, ten parcels, eight-four-six-eight dash oh-one-six dash nine-oh-one, eight-four-seven-five dash zero-zero-two dash zero-three-two. At ten, I guess that's ten-oh-two, West Covina Parkway, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Eight-four-seven-five zero-zero-two nine-oh-three, eight-four-seven-five zero-zero-six oh-one-seven, at nine-four-four West, excuse me, West Covina Parkway. Eight-four-seven-five dash oh-oh-six oh-five-three, at nine-thirty-four, West Covina Parkway. Eight-seven-five oh-oh-six dash nine-one-six, eight-four-seven-five zero-zero-six zero-five-four, at four-oh-one, South Vincent Avenue. And eight-four-two, eight-four-eight-two zero-three-nine zero-seven-three, eight-four-seven-three zero-one-eight nine-oh-three, eight-four-eight-six zero-one-six nine-oh-one, and eight-four-eight-six zero-zero-eight zero-zero-two, at seven-oh-seven, South Lark Allen. Excuse me. Request for a general plan amendment for nine parcels and a zone change for two parcels within the city. Because many of the parcels do not have addresses, the assessors parcel number APN, APN numbers are provided above. The city recently adopted a new general plan on December twentieth, twenty sixteen. A total of nine parcels did not have a land use identified on the adopted map. A zone change, I must be going through the change of life.
You're not alone.
A zone change is proposed for two parcels to bring them into conformance with the neighboring properties. Can we have some kind of a staff report?
Well, I guess I would make a comment that the chairman may have a future in bingo calling, we'll see. So, yeah, I think you, you covered that pretty well in that introduction, it's a general plan amendment and a zone change, and the general plan was adopted on December twentieth, twenty sixteen, and and I think it's fairly common when you adopt a general plan or, or a new zoning map to have to go back and make some corrections, at least that, that's been my understanding. We, we sort of expected to do that when we adopted it. When we went through the map, we determined that there were nine parcels that had been left out, out of nineteen thousand eight-hundred-sixty-six parcels. I didn't do the calculation how many that was. Most of them were left out because there was some confusion with them looking like a right-of-way. So that's the reason they were left out, because they look like part of the street, because some are linear, and some are very small. So one of the, the general plan amendment here is to provide designations for those nine parcels, and none of those nine parcels have really come up as a big issue that needs to be addressed, they're just parcels we need to take care of so that it's clear for the, for the community that those are what the designations are. We also have a zone change seventeen-oh-one, which has two parcels, one which we discovered is part of the general plan that it needed, it was probably wise to change it, and then one that the city had purchased to become parkland, and so we figured this is a good time to, to do that. So this is all being done as sort of a busy work to, to bring things into alignment to what we, we'd like them to be, or perhaps what, could say that what we intended them to be when the general plan was adopted. And we already covered why the assessor parcels were, were mentioned. So I'm gonna go through the lots, one by one here, and this first chart is kind of large, and it's on page two of the staff report, and it provides information on the various sites, we, there's a total of six different sites, with some of them are single parcels, some of them are multiple parcels, and this kind of gives you an idea of, of the parcel number, the address, what the current use is, and what's going on on the property, and then what the previous general plan designation is, first of all, we'll cover, and what the proposed general plan designation. So keep in mind that just because it, the new general plan didn't have a general plan designation, doesn't mean that the previous one didn't. There was a general plan designation, it, there was just some confusion when the mapping was done. And this is the zone change chart that shows the two, this similar information, the parcel location, the current use, the existing zoning, and the proposed zone. So the first site is located, this is Cameron, and this is the wash, so the, the city yard is in this, actually, this is it, I think. So it's just in that neighborhood, and there's, there's a small parcel that is located here that I think all of us thought was part of the right-of-way, but it's actually, it's not, so it's part of the city-owned property. So the idea here, and you can see, this is the general plan map, you can see that that little triangle is, is, is clear, so that it doesn't have a designation. It only touches one property, which is this one, so the thought is it should match that property, which is a neighborhood medium designation, so that's our recommendation there. And sort of like when we do the code amendments, if somebody wants to make a, have a discussion on a, a single parcel, go ahead and stop me, I think it's apropos, and we don't have any other hearings after this, so I'd rather do that than have to go back and try to remember what you had a question on. So that's the first site, general plan designation. And you can see around there, there's other, this is a single family, but there's a street that divides the single family from that parcel. So this site is an interesting site in the city, this is site two and three, this is site two, and this is site three. So this is West Covina Parkway, this is Vincent, this is the wash, and this is the mall here, this is the line where you get stuck waiting for Starbucks to open. So that gives you some idea of where it's at, this is Cross Creek Plaza where Panera is, and as you may recognize, or you may not, that there's this parcel that runs through there that actually is owned by the city, and therefore, in many ways, people would assume that it's a, it's a right-of-way, but in fact, what they did was they bridged, there must have been a lease or something, this goes back to when they developed that Parkway Plaza, they bridged the wash, so that actually is a, a bridge over the wash that's used as parking. And so that's that, this, and then there's a segment up here that's actually owned by the center, that's also separated because of that, that wash, it was on the other side of the wash. And then there's four properties here, one in the corner, one here, this one owned by the city, that's why there's no address, and then this one here, I think is a tax office. So there's four lots on that side, so you see two here, one, two, and then four here, one, two, three, four. So as you can see on the general plan, th- those are white, the confusion, I think, was that that was part of the right-of-way, because it kind of looks like it would have been part of the right-of-way. The idea here is to take all these properties and make them commercial, as you can see, this is all commercial, everything on this side of the wash is commercial in the new general plan, and it was, before, it was service, neighborhood, commercial, and regional commercial. So this side was service and neighborhood commercial, this side was regional commercial, so it's always had a commercial designation.
Is that street there, California, that you can barely read?
This is California right here, yes.
Thank you.
And it's this one here where it's blown up. The, the one caveat to that is that we are recommending that this lot, that's, I'm sorry, this lot that's owned by the city, it, it go to an open space designation. I don't know there's really a reason for that to be a commercial designation, the rest of them, we would suggest go into commercial designation, just like they have been, just like the properties across the street. And all of those properties, with the exception of the one I just pointed out, have a commercial use either associated with them, or there's a commercial building on the site. The next site is on the Easterly side of town, this is Citra, this is Citrus, as it goes up the hill, and Hillside is not too far down this way, and then, I'm losing my... I'm getting, I'm fading, and this is Las Rosas, and so there's a, there's a common space lot. One of the remotes has a function. I know we found one that did last night. Anyway, so that's an open space area that's actually owned by the homeowners association, of Las Rosas Homeowners Association. So our recommendation there, and you can see that it's blank, it's white, it was previously designated as residential very low, but the thought is that it should be parks and open space, because it's an open space parcel, and it's part of that development, and unlikely to be developed because of its dimensions. There's, it's a hearing, you'll have a chance to say something when we're done. Oh, I'm sorry, that's the planning commission. That is, just to, that is site number four, just for your... And then, site number five is located on Fair Grove and Parkside, so just west of Azusa, and that is a landscape, it's actually a city-owned landscape maintenance district, also could be referred to as a part of the Paseo system, it's the northerly section of that. So we're also suggesting, similar to the last one, that this be, it was residential medium, but it's a, in the new general plan, the landscape maintenance districts have been designated as parks and open space for obvious reasons, and so we're suggesting that it become parks and open space. So that, that covers the general plan amendments, the zone changes, we go back to that, that small parcel, that triangle parcel. The, the, this is the zoning map, it looks a lot like the general plan map, but this is the zoning map, and as you can see, this property, where'd it go? Here is next to this property, which has a designation of urban neighborhood, so our recommendation would be, I'm sorry. We got a misprint there, don't we? Let me do a little, let me do some reconnaissance on that, because I think we're using the general plan map here. Can you pull up the zoning map? We'll do some work on that while we're working, hopefully we can get that, but I believe that it's general urban, and that's the designation that we're, because that lot is designated, all these lots are designated general urban, so we think that this should be as well. And then, lastly, we need the downtown plan, if you can... And then, lastly, we need the downtown plan, if you can, okay. And then, lastly, Cameron Park, the Cameron Park site. This is the historic Cameron Park site. The city did purchase this property, this single-family property with the, and it's, for years, that's been the concept, that we would purchase that property and convert it to parkland. So, that is what we're intending to do. It's city-owned now. It's not privately owned. The city owns it, and the idea is to take this and change it from the R1 standard to, or zoning to an open space zone. So, that concludes the presentation. I will, we will do a little research there, but if, if you have any questions, I can try to answer those.
Commissioner Castellanos?
Just a quick question on the Fair Grove one. It was residential medium, and now it's, but it's, I mean, it's, pretty much is like bushes and stuff, right?
Yes, it's a slope, actually.
Yeah, and it's gonna stay that way, but we're just updating the...
Oh, yes, there's no changes. The city is not looking to do anything. This is purely about...
Bringing everything up to date.
Bringing every, and make sure that there's colors on all the parcels on the general plan.
Okay, cool. Thank you.
It's about designation, not improvement. Any other questions? Well, I would recommend going ahead and opening the hearing, and we will be researching to make sure we've got the right designation for that zoning.
Please fill out a card before you go. I appreciate it.
My name is Vicki Bargere, and I live on the corner of Las Rosas and Citrus, twenty-nine seventy-five.
Can we have the, that number four? I think it was number four.
Site number four.
Nope.
Las Rosas and?
Citrus.
Oh, okay. Oh, twenty-nine seventy-five?
Correct.
Okay.
The pie shape. There you go.
Okay.
And I would like to know the difference, the definition of what you have as neighborhood low and open space. What is the difference? What's the definition of a neighborhood low and of an open space?
Well, my recommendation would be to ask the commission. This is the commission's, meaning not mine. I'm helping them. So, ask the commission whatever questions you have, and we can, they can ask, direct me to answer.
I heard your question, and I'm gonna ask staff for an answer.
And Mike, and, well, okay, so, the difference is a, I forgot what the designation was.
Neighborhood low.
Neighborhood low is a, is a R1 standard. It's a, it's a, it allows for residential development.
For a single-family...
Yeah, so, someone theoretically, it's unlikely to happen because of all the contortions you'd have to go through to, for a homeowners association to sell off an open space, but theoretically, at least, with that zoning designation, they'd be allowed to propose a subdivision or to build a house.
Correct. Okay.
And open space does not allow that.
Okay.
It's required to be open or parkland.
Okay. Well, and to that end, then, I would respectfully request that it is designated, designated open space. Having lived there since December second, nineteen eighty-two, so I'm going on thirty-five years, when they started developing that, we had all kinds of land erosion and mud and all kinds of things coming down into our pool and down to our driveway. We lost three trees to water damage when we would finally get rain. And so, I would prefer it never be developed. So, I'm just respectfully requesting that you keep it open space. Thank you.
It's not working, is it, Ron?
I got the letter from, you know, the city. I was a little concerned, because if you've actually ever seen that property, that little triangle, there's two huge culverts going through it, and it's extremely steep. So, I thought, wow, are you asking that it be low residential? But now, I'm understanding that you're proposing that it be free, open space. And I certainly couldn't even imagine anyone building on that. I did call the homeowners association, and they said they own the property, and they have no intention of trying to develop that. And of course, as a member of the homeowners association, it had, it would have to be voted in. I came primarily tonight to just get some information and get clarification of what low residential and open space was. On the letter, it said it was proposed that it would be low residential. So, that concerned me. It probably, if I had gotten the letter and it said proposed open space, then I would have not been as concerned. So, thank you.
You're not talking about the same piece of property?
Yes, the same.
You are.
Nine-seven-seven Las Rosas.
You mentioned, oh, it was proposed to be open space.
Yeah, on the letter. On the letter, it was...
The notice was mailed out, was, had an incorrect, a couple incorrect citations.
Okay, okay.
Right. So, if you, if it had mentioned that that was your proposal to have it open space, I probably wouldn't have been asking.
So, you, you want it to be open space?
Absolutely. I can't even imagine trying to build on that.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Actually, Jeff, I have a question. For this particular lot, even though it's designated as neighborhood low density, but due to the lot width and the length, and because there's not, I don't think it's possible, even if anyone wants to build anything, to fit that requirement of their setbacks. So, ultimately, at the end, even if it's designated as neighborhood low density, no one can really put a home there due to the fact that it is just so narrow. Is that...
That's, that's probably the case. However, odd-shaped lots, keep in mind, that's what variances are made for, is odd-shaped lots. So, to allow them to develop. In this case, so, that's our, that's why we're recommending, if you, the general plan, the new general plan map takes, the old, the old general plan map didn't necessarily recognize the landscape maintenance districts, Paseos, and HOA-owned common space as open space. They just zoned it as the properties around it. The new general plan has a different philosophy, where it takes that and makes those open space. So, it really dials in and tells future individuals that the city's goal here is for that to remain open space. In one sense, I tend to agree with you. I don't, at least not in today's environment, would I ever imagine someone trying to develop that. But I don't know what, I don't know what the future holds for us. And so, I think it is, it's probably in the best interest of the city to make it open space. And I don't think that the homeowners association has any concern on that. They were, you know, everyone was noticed around there, and the only people here are speaking in favor of being open space.
Well, if, if we make it open space, it can always be changed at a later date.
It could be, if there was some reason to do that, and someone had an application to do that. That would be an up, an upzone, and upzones are generally harder. It's easier for the city to deny an upzone than it is a downzone, or a denial of something that's allowed by zoning. So, that's just kind of a legal kind of quirk that it's good to keep in mind. That's why you kind of downzone. If it's open space and the city wants it open space, the best thing is to put a general plan designation as open space.
What is staff recommending at this point?
Oh, open space. For that lot, open space.
Okay.
We always, we always intended that.
Oh, but here, it said proposed general plan is neighborhood low.
Well, if you're looking at the notice, yes, but on the staff report, it's, it's, it's existing neighborhood low. No, I'm sorry. I'm not on the right page. The proposal in the staff report on page two for that site is parks and open space. It's current, the previous general plan designation was residential very low. That's page two of the staff report.
But if we were to keep it neighborhood or low, it would be kind of uniform in that particular area.
You, you, you could, you have the opportunity to zone it, or put a general plan designation the same as the house around it, yes. You could do that. That's up to, the city has the ability to do whatever they think. You know, the general plan is sort of a broad vision. What do we want to see happen over the next twenty years? So, that's, that's the idea. But, so, the city has the ability to, to take those and say, you know, we'd like to leave them open for development, so let's put them as a, as a neighborhood medium or neighborhood low, or something to that effect. That's not our recommendation, but, but yes, the city does have that ability.
Well, seeing where it is and all that, and the residents came out that live here want it to be open, I think we ought to leave it as open.
Yeah, I agree. I think, well, as we all know, if someone did want that for some odd reason, whatever that may be, we would all have to agree that a variance is okay and that necessary and meets the findings, and then the council would have to agree as well. So, I, I think, well, I think it makes sense to change it to open space. Yeah, I don't see, I don't see, at least from what I've seen in our previous discussions, I don't see all of us here agreeing that, that variances would be warranted or make sense there. That's, that's what I think.
Especially the, the, one of the people here said that there's a lot of mud washing down, and a lot, it would take a lot of different type of, of structure to build on it. I, you know, I just, I just think we ought to just leave it as open space, and if somebody wants to come with a, with a specific plan that would adjudicate all those problems and all that, then we could consider it.
I think you had a request.
Oh, I, I'd like to say something first before you go. I just think that because that area, it's particularly a neighborhood area, we should keep it neighborhood zoning, due to the fact that if anyone wanted to develop that particular lot, they kind of have to follow the neighborhood in that whole area. Versus if on Citrus, it came west across, and we had a barn, and this, this street literally was a cul-de-sac. There was nothing there. And the city took by eminent domain, because there was a little road access that allowed them to access the water tower that's up above where these people were discussing. The city came in and took by eminent domain, and because that area is zoned, you're supposed to have a full acre, and they were trying to make things equal, they took us down to three-quarters of an acre, and they gave us that little point that ends up right at Las Rosas and Citrus, which becomes an, and is up above our pool, it's higher up, and it is useless, because underneath there runs a big clay drainage pipe, where the riparian, well, I've always called it riparian, that's really not the correct term, but that space up there has two big culverts, and they're supposed to run into this drain, which they didn't do initially. And when the first, the city signed off that it was complete, they stopped. I would guess a good ten feet short of it. We got mud in our pool with the first rain. That being aside, that piece of property is very steep, and that corner, when the builders came to start grading it, they tried to force us to give them that lot, that little piece the city had given us, because the turn the corner and go up is very steep, and they could grade into our land and make it a less steep, what do you call that? A less of a steep grade. That's how steep, and it just gets steeper all the way up. So, it may be narrow, but it is deeper than it looks there in terms of going up, and then there's those two culverts or drainage that go through. And so, to ever say to make it easy for someone to build there would just be a nightmare. So, I would encourage you to make it open space, so that it stays open space instead of someone ever coming through to build, because we know, West Covina, they've built on every square inch of property, you know, and that's, that one less, so...
But other structure may be able to build on open space there as well.
Right, but it's harder to do that than if it's already designated neighborhood low. They'd have to go back and have it re-designated. That's what I'm saying.
Thank you. I will, I will. Probably hearing is closed. Commission discussion?
Yeah, I'll just say, I, I think I understand what Commissioner Hing is trying to say, but I just can't envision what in the world we would build there, ever. I mean, I can't envision a business or a structure, or I, I mean, I, so, I, I think we're kind of generally on the same page, except for maybe we're just visualizing or defining things slightly differently. Because I, I do see the rationale behind the proposed zoning of, of open space, leaving it single or low residential. I think that, if anything, would only open up the possibility of someone screwing around and attempting mischief, really, of, I'm gonna screw with this HOA and give them a hard time and give them a nightmare, because I'm bored. I, I don't, I mean, that's, so, I think, I see fully the rationale behind it being open space, and I think that will serve the neighborhood well. So, I, I like the proposals in their entirety, and I'm, I'm okay with what's proposed.
Commissioner Minas?
No comment.
Commissioner Hing, any further?
Better off at this time leaving it as open. And like I say, if somebody comes along with something that's, you know, I can't imagine what it would be, but it might be something that they would come, we'd still have to approve it, you know, before it would go forward. So, I, I think we're better off just leaving it as open space this time. Could we have a resolution number?
Yes, there's two resolution numbers. The resolution for general plan amendment seventeen oh one is seventeen dash five-nine-two-zero, and the resolution number for zone change seventeen oh one is seventeen dash five-nine-two-one. You know what? I should cover, some, some of you may already understand this, but this is a general plan amendment, zone change, which is under the authority of the city council. So, tonight's review by the planning commission is a recommendation to the city councils. You're not approving it, you're recommending, and then it'll be scheduled for a city council hearing, and noticing will be done at that point again. So, I didn't cover that in my staff report. I apologize that, for that, but that, that is the process we're having. Yes, and they'll, they'll take it up from there.
Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
We have roll call, please.
Commissioner Castellanos?
Aye.
Commissioner Minas?
Yes.
Commissioner Hing?
Aye.
Chairman Holtz?
Aye. We appreciate the company.
Continuation of oral communications. There's nobody here. Commission reports, comments, miscellaneous items. It's time when a member of the commission may bring matter to attention to full commission as when the scope duties assigned to the commission. Any item that was considered during the agenda is not appropriate for discussion in this section of the agenda. No commission discussion or action can be considered at this time. If the commission desires to discuss an issue raised by a speaker, take an action, the commission may vote to agendize the matter for future meetings. One thing I'd like to bring up, if, if at all possible, it is very, very difficult to see the overheads. The last few meetings, I mean, it's, it's impossible. I mean, we can see them here on the screen. It was a lot better months ago, and it was that way for years, when we could dim the lights. And now, I guess we can't dim them anymore. So, can we make a formal request that they, I don't know why they don't work anymore, to do that? And the other thing is, when people submit their, their maps and things, like this one that was in green that we had up here, I don't think that was ours. Wasn't that the applicant's? The green, the green overheads we had?
All the PowerPoints that were presented tonight were done by staff. Now, the information on them was, was the applicants, and we take it and put it in a PowerPoint presentation.
Okay, because if, if you did those, I mean, they're, they're impossible to see.
Well, so, let me, I don't have a schedule or know exactly what the timeframe is, but yes, you, there's no question, as you may notice, that we are using a, a portable projector. This one doesn't work anymore. So, that, the, actually, I'm surprised maybe that hadn't come up before this, but, because we've been doing this for several months now, there, there is a, a plan to, to fix and get better audiovisuals. So, that, there's a recognized problem. I will communicate about the shutting off the lights, because I agree with you, that does make it easier to read.
Makes a big difference.
I'm not sure what they did that made that not possible, but they may have...
It used to just be pushing, because I used to push the button when I was, sorry, your arm's over here, you know, and it made it a whole difference.
We can shut off the lights. I think now it just shuts them all off, so we're sitting completely dark. So, maybe if we all get miners' helmets, we'll be all right there.
Anyway, that's my request.
We'll bring that up.
Thank you. Anyone else? No? Planning directors report?
So, we have the fourth coming on. So we have the forthcoming on for you. I do want to let you know, point out on the forthcoming, we do have items for October 24th, so there's some items. There's one continued from the previous meeting, we have some other items. Take note that on November 14th, there will not be a meeting. There's going to be a special council meeting here that night, I believe it's on districting. So they needed the space, and so we didn't really have anything that was planned for that meeting. So there will not be a meeting that night. So that's a good night to get your tickets for Dancing With The Stars or whatever, you know.
Or come watch.
Or come watch, yeah, the show here. So just to point that out. And that's, and we have the minutes for the subcommittee, and that's all I have to report.